Testing, checking audio for CATS broadcast. Test one, two.
All right. I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order, the Monroe County Council, our regular session for Tuesday, June thirteenth. It's five thirty-one PM. We're just a minute late. I want to welcome everyone to this meeting that are both with us here in person in the Nat U Hill, the Monroe County Courthouse, as well as joining us via Zoom. Uh, we, it looks to me that um, we have councilors Munson, Iverson, and Crossley, as well as myself, Trent Deckard, here in the Nat U Hill Room. Uh, currently, we do not have with us councilors McKim and Wiltz, who are elsewhere, uh, with their, their work and/or counselor Hawk. And so that shall conclude our attendance. I'm gonna now take us to the Pledge of Allegiance, if you all join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you very much. We're gonna go to item three, and that's our agenda. Does anyone on council wish to add or remove an item from tonight's agenda? Seeing none, if we have our agenda for this evening. And that'll now take us to item four, which is public comment. This will, we will now invite members of the public to make comments on items that are not on our agenda. So anything not on our agenda. And there'll be a time limit of three minutes per speaker. Looks like we've got someone here in the room, and I see a hand raised on Zoom. We'll start here in the room. For speakers, I'd ask that you sign in there on the podium and say your name and uh, go take it from there. Welcome.
Thanks. Uh, my name's Greg Alexander. Um, imagine that some public institution took a survey and found out that seventy percent of their users wanted to drive to their facility. So they built an ample parking lot with complete driveway. I mean, of course, right? And that's just what happened. MCPL did a survey about potential sites for the Southwest branch, and they found almost everyone expected to travel more than a mile for a branch library. And that sixty percent of people said they expected to drive for that trip. So they spent about $2 million building giant parking facilities. Um, and they built a driveway that went all the way to the road. Uh, in that same survey, forty percent of people said they didn't expect to drive, even though they knew it would be more than a mile from their house. Um, and they said they wanted to walk or bike. A few said they wanted to take the bus. They knew that wasn't going to be possible. Very small numbers said that. At, and the facility for pedestrians and bicyclists doesn't connect to the sidewalk at all. It's stunning. You know, you have to go literally a fifth a mile around. Is access a winner-take-all, simple majority election? If we only need a facility for forty percent of the people, do we even need it at all? Don't we matter? Boy, the library has a reason. They're not being capricious. They didn't build it because the county is about to tear all that up anyways for full, like, phase three. Um, supposed to be let this November, so starting next year at the soonest. So instead of building a temporary sidewalk, they're gonna wait one year, maybe two years, possibly three, probably not three, right? We're gonna wait for that sidewalk. So we've got an IOU as a pedestrian transportation facility. An IOU is a very usable pedestrian transportation facility. People are walking in the dirt. People are taking that long trip around. People are walking in the, in the parking lot for no reason. People are taking that long trip around. People are walking in the, in the parking lot for no reason. Um, and in the driveway, sharing driveway with cars that just came off Fullerton Pike. So when there's gonna be construction, that driveway is gonna be torn up. A hundred foot of that driveway that they just built is gonna be torn up. Are we expecting that maybe for six months or a year, there will be no driveway access here? No, they're gonna work very hard to maintain driveway access. But at MCPL, the pedestrian closure has already begun. It's not even that hard of a problem. If you just look at it, the grade will change, but right now, the greatest level at two different places, they could build an appropriate walkway. It would cost almost nothing. They have spent so much money on this project already. Anyways, I'm coming to you guys because this body paid for about half of the library's construction costs. And this body also funds the um, county planning department. County planning has a responsibility to review site plans for pedestrian connectivity. They cannot be accepting IOUs in lieu of ADA mandated accessible routes. They need to know that you have their back on this. And the other thing, you need to make sure the library knows this is not an uncorrectable problem. We could build an appropriate sidewalk tomorrow. It is not hard to do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, on Zoom, I see a hand raised, Jim Shelton. We'll invite you to unmute and talk to us.
Good afternoon, Castle, Jim Shelton. I just want to make sure you and the community are aware of the passing of Iola Talia Pharoah yesterday. She was a tremendous asset to this community as a juvenile judge. I never knew her personally. I knew the story of her husband, uh, for a long time, that he had been an IU football hero and been the first African American drafted into the NFL. But I didn't really learn her story until I be, till I began, began training to be a CASA in twenty twelve. And then I learned of her story, what an extraordinary judge she had been, how compassionate and yet strict she had been. And she basically set the standard for juvenile justice uh, in Monroe County. She served as the judge, court circuit court judge from nineteen ninety-five, I believe, till when she retired in two thousand and four. And I've heard Steve Galvin talk about her a number of times, and he certainly followed in her steps and followed her standards. And uh, when he couldn't handle all the cases, uh, Francis Hill also stepped in and handled some of the cases. And she certainly followed those standards. And now Holly Harvey, with the retirement of Steve Galvin at the end of the year, is doing the same thing. So she has just been a treasure for this community, and uh, the children in the community have certainly benefited from it. She was very compassionate about the children, but she's also with the parents. Uh, she again was strict with them, but caring about them, uh, realized that they had problems that had to be corrected and helped uh, do that as best she could. So just want the community to know about that. Uh, if you have Facebook, you can go on Judge Kara Crothie's uh, page and uh, find a salute to her. Uh, Kara Crothie served as a public defender in her court for some time. And also, uh, she has a link to our law school, uh, a s- a story, a number of stories, really, about, and the story of uh, Judge Talia Pharoah. So I'm sure the H T will get it in a couple of days, and I invite you to pay attention to it. But uh, she really has helped this community, especially in the youth area, be what it is. So wanted you to know, and wanted you to know how important uh, she has been to the CASA program.
Thank you very much, Mr. Shelton. And we were talking just before the meeting began, particularly Counselor Crossley and I, about the loss of Judge Talia Pharoah. Um, I, I had an opportunity in school to shadow her, and my mother worked for her, and uh, may not ever be another jurist quite like her and her personality. And I, I know other counselors may have other comments they wanted to add, and I'd take a point if anyone wanted to add anything to that. Or we can hold till council comments. Yeah. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Shelton. It is, is a sad day for our community and also one of uh, big remembrance on, on the, the loss. Any other individuals here in the room or on Zoom that wish to make public comment? See, we're joined by Mr. Eric Spoonmore of the Bloomington Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you, counsel, and uh, certainly echo um, the remarks of Mr. Shelton, as well as counsel tonight. Very sad day from Monroe County, passing of Judge Talia Pharoah. Uh, had such a tremendous impact on this community, uh, very dynamic figure, and um, appreciate all of those kind words. Uh, I'm here to speak tonight about the uh, meeting that was uh, held yesterday at City Hall, uh, concerning the Convention Center Expansion Project and the Capital Improvement Board, or the potential formation of a Capital Improvement Board. And I really just want to thank uh, our county officials for engaging the city uh, in this process and continuing to be very thoughtful about ways that we can uh, move this project forward. Uh, as you all know, this is an important project for the chamber. Uh, it has been for many, many years. We've had a food and beverage tax in place since two thousand and seventeen. Uh, and I'm finally starting to see, I think, the light at the end of the tunnel here. And so I was very encouraged with uh, the discourse that um, we heard at the meeting yesterday. Uh, I've read through the interlocal agreement, the draft interlocal agreement. I think that is very thoughtful, and I just want to applaud uh, all of the folks in the city, in the county, who have been working on that uh, partnership. I think it's uh, brilliant. Uh, the pathways that uh, were written into that interlocal agreement for the appointments on the Capital Improvement Board. It allows for uh, both uh, Democratic Party and Republican Party to have representation, the city and the county to have equal representation. And then what I thought was most brilliant of all was to have the six people appointed by the elected officials appoint the seventh. And so I don't know how you can get any more fair than that. And I think uh, that you all have done a fantastic job of thinking through all of that and really uh, working with the city. Um, and I think right now, this is just really great timing for a Capital Improvement Board uh, to take the reins of this project. You know, the city's very busy with some very important uh, initiatives that they have going on, building projects, including the Hopewell uh, neighborhood, big deal. Uh, we're very excited about that. Uh, the police station that will be um, uh, constructed and, and uh, down at showers. Uh, the, the fiber infrastructure projects that are going on in the city, there's a lot going on. The county's got a lot going on as well with the jail. So this is just an ideal time, I think, for experts to be appointed to the Capital Improvement Board to take this project and really run with it. And uh, again, just thank you for that and hope that we'll continue this going forward and look forward to all the future developments um, with the Convention Center. So let me know how I can help in any way. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Spoonmore. Any other members of the public wishing to make comment on items not on the agenda? Going once, twice? We're gonna move on, but before we do, I do want to note Counselor Hawk is with us here in the Nat U Hill Room. Takes us to number five, department updates. Do we have any Monroe County departments wishing to make an update to the council, either online or here in the Nat U Hill? Okay. Not seeing any takers, so going once, twice, we're gonna move on. That's fine. Six, uh, item six on our agenda is county council liaison updates. And does anyone wish to make an update? Yes, Counselor Munson.
I would like to announce that uh, on June sixteenth, the Sophia Travis Grants Committee will have their applications open uh, and available for local community service providers to begin uh, their process of applying for grants. And you may do this by checking the county council webpage under the, the grant section, and I think you will find everything that you need for applying. So please spread the word to other, other community service providers. This is an important part of our support for the services that they provide to our residents.
Thank you. I look forward to the Sophia Travis Grants Committee results. Others, Counselor Iverson.
Yes, I have uh, two updates today, and I'll start with the Justice Fiscal Advisory Committee, or as we're calling it J F A C. Um, we have now advertised uh, that meetings will be uh, conducted in hybrid and in this room uh, on the third floor of the Monroe County Courthouse on uh, June, the next meeting will be June twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three at four thirty P M. Uh, we will continue to uh, inform the community of updates through our Facebook page, which you can find by going to the, your Facebook app and searching for Monroe County Council. You can also find a J F A C website, um, that's gonna have much more information by going to the Monroe County Council's website. And on the bottom, you can see in this department, and J F A C will be there. If you have any questions on how to get to any of that, simply contact any one of us here on the council or through the council email that is provided on the Facebook page. The other item that I wanted to bring forward is that we are having tremendous um, uh, progress in terms of our um, uh, the climate action group that we're working with, and we are, let me get to that email. Uh, we are working right now with uh, Hader Attic. He is our McKinney Climate Fellow, and he is working right now on making sure that there is a climate um, uh, summary for us, not only in terms of our uh, usage, but also what's going to be modeled into the future in terms of risks um, from the climate crisis. Uh, we are also developing a community-wide survey that we're gonna be asking our community stakeholders to distribute to measure community attitudes as it relates to climate resilience. And then finally, we have uh, put together a task force of community leaders uh, on the climate issue, uh, that we will then have a, a series of listening sessions uh, later in July, and we'll be making the announcement of those dates coming forward. So a lot of things happening in terms of um, uh, financing for the new jail and also for making sure that we're being resilient in the face of the climate crisis.
Thank you, Counselor Iverson. Any other counselors? Counselor Crossley.
Thank you. Um, so Linda Brady, our chief probation officer here, um, wanted us to share um, and help recruit. So I have an email that I wanted to read as well, and I will try to um, put this on my county council, um, my personal fa- or my Facebook page. And it says, "The Monroe County Juvenile's Detention Alternatives Initiative is seeking individuals ages eighteen to twenty-five who have had prior experience with our local youth justice system to join a probation advisory work group. Um, members of this work group will provide input on your local youth justice system reform efforts. Um, it is being created by the, our local J D A I Steering Committee in collaboration with the Monroe Circuit Court and the Circuit Court Probation Department. Um, and those interested in participating in this, you can apply to do this. Applications are due no later than June thirtieth of this year. And if you are, you can contact uh, the J D A I Coordinator Christine McAfee. Her phone number is eight one two three four nine two six four nine, or you can email C M C A F E E at C O dot Monroe dot I N dot U S. Um, again, many different ways for folks to get involved, especially um, this particular age group, and I will try my best to spread the news accordingly, but I just wanted to um, help uh, Ms. Brady send that information out. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Crossley. Any other counselors wishing to make liaison reports? Counselor Hawk? Can you turn your mic on?
There's many exciting things going on right now, as many of you know. If you've been out and about, you see that the highway people are out there doing their work and, and really with their work, they're saving lives because those big potholes, they're dangerous. It's not just you're gonna tear up your car, but you, you're putting a lot, your life at risk and many of those. And so our highway department's been out there doing their very best to try to get everything the way it needs to be, and including our bridges. Um, and um, so I see that she's here, and I'm sure she'll add a lot to that. And I also wanted to say hello to Carlos, and I felt that was Carlos in the audience. I can't see out there that far, but it's not. Right? Because I just see that Carlos is sick. But if you've lived, lived near the airport, you've seen those huge uh, airplanes coming in, and everybody's on Facebook. Oh, did you see the big plane, the big plane? And so, um, if you love your airport, and I hope that you do, uh, I hope that you're following along with all the exciting things going on there. And um, I'm, I'm excited that they have a plan for the future, so that airport can continue to support local business. Uh, because if we don't have that airport, many of those big employers will not locate here. It is not just for the people who think, well, it's because I want to get on a plane and go to New York. These are people bringing in local dollars, local jobs, and it's so very important. So thank you for that. And by the way, I could proceed with. I hope that we don't have to put off what Carlos is asking for, for the airport. We could proceed with that. What, what was his?
We've got it on the agenda, so we can take a look, and if council's wills to move forward, we can. Yeah. All right, so that will take us to item number seven on our agenda. Board and commission appointment, Counselor Iverson.
Counsel, I move to approve the revision of counselors Jeff McKim and Trent Deckard to the Income Tax Public Safety Local Income Tax Committee.
Do we have a second? Thank you. Motion is been offered and seconded. Uh, are there any questions from the council or discussion points?
I, I'd just like to say I thank you, uh, Counselor Deckard, for uh, taking that position. It was not going to work for me this year uh, to serve on that uh, with what the schedule is for my summer. So I appreciate you doing that.
It's my pleasure to serve. All right, any other comments? So if there is none, uh, we will do a roll call vote on this.
Actually, everyone is present. You can do a voice vote.
We'll take a voice, voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Yeah, eyes have it. Thank you very much. That takes us to item number eight. This is the Highway Department slash Redevelopment Commission.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and establish as the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-two, authorizing the insurance, the issuance of bonds in an amount not to exceed eight million dollars plus investment earnings for the purpose of providing funds for the Fullerton Pike Bridge Project. The complete ordinance is available online for review in the packet.
We are joined here in the Nat U Hill by Jeff Cockrell with County Legal. Mr. Cockrell?
Yes, this is, this is an introduction. We'll do a, a formal notice in the papers for, for your July meeting uh, for a vote. Um, what you have before you is a bond ordinance that is a bond for a revenue bond where the revenues will come from our major bridge.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Counselor Munson, did you second?
Was there a motion?
Yes.
Yes.
I didn't hear the mo- I didn't hear the add to motion. I'm sorry. There is now a second.
Thank you. Sorry, I should have cut that. Okay, so we're, we're, this, this, let me, let me get back. This, this is a, an eight mil- up to eight million dollar bond, and it's going to be paid for the revenues from our major bridge fund and our Fullerton Pike TIF fund. Um, the reason we're using both of those funds is to make sure that we have ample coverage for the lending. Um, it's, it's primarily for the major bridge that will be part of the Fulton Pike Project, which is a five hundred and twenty-four foot bridge that will have a ten-foot multi-use path and a five-foot sidewalk. Um, that's the major, if there is any leftover after that, because we, the, the bids have not been let yet, we would utilize that in the, for a future project for the Na- Mount Taber Bridge Project, which is a future project that will be an approximate four hundred and fifty-foot bridge that will span Beam Blossom Creek. Those are the two major bridge projects. We, we've talked about this at a work session previously where we had those two combined. Uh, we just felt that with the interest rates and the timing of that second project being a little bit too far in the future, that it didn't make sense to combine those into one lending, given where. given where rates are and 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 that. So this Fullerton Pike Bridge and that project is going to be let this, I believe, November. And so we really want to get moving on, making sure that we can accept that, those bids when they come in. This is a first reading. We'll be back, and we can talk about it more uh next month. Um, if you have any questions tonight, more than happy to answer them. If you have any questions between now and then, go ahead and email me, let me know what they are, and we'll be back at the July meeting.
Okay, and just as Mr. Cockrell is noting, this will be back on the July eleventh agenda. So members of the public that have interest in this, uh, you can certainly uh come to that meeting as well and and comment. Um, so I'll open it up to questions or comments from counselors. Look to my left.
No question.
About to my right.
I didn't hear you say, what is this? What number of years is this for?
I believe this will be a twenty-year bond uh with the the first four years, and I can I can email out uh amortization schedule once it's finalized. The first four years will have a higher payment than fo- the following years because we wanted to maintain flexibility in case we do have to do that second bonding for the Mount Tabor Bridge Road.
All right, other questions or comments from counselors, Counselor Iverson?
I I simply wanted to point out the exhibit that you put in the pack, Exhibit A on page thirty-one of the packet, is incredibly helpful uh for folks in of the public that uh want more information about these two projects. Uh, there's quite a bit of information there, so thank you for including those little Reader Digest versions of this.
And and I will share that thanks with Lisa Ridge, who actually gave me all that information to put in.
Great teamwork.
Counselor Hawk?
Right, as a reminder to the public, um, at least at the time that we uh put in place this major bridge fund, there were very few counties that had a major bridge fund. And what we'll be be doing right now with these long spans of bridges, if we didn't have that bridge fund, we would, well, we would be searching for one for certain. But it it's important because of the number of of feet that there's just no way you're going to bring in enough money out of out of the regular bridge fund to do these major projects. So um, while I'm never a fan of big taxes or new taxes, uh, we've laughed and called this the Marty Hawk tax for a long time because when researching, I found this new tax and said, well, what about this? Uh, because I'm always wanting to do what we can uh to support our bridges and our roads because I believe that's what people really think they're paying their taxes for. They want to be able to safely get back and forth, so uh I thank you for that.
Thank you very much. Other questions or comments from counsel? I I did have one question myself. Um, would this, and and this might be a Lisa Ridge uh question, would the completion of this, would that complete most, if not all, of the Fullerton work? In your opinion, or is there something here I'm missing on any of that?
So when the project was originally set up, technically phase four would have been from Walnut Street Pike, where we ended that project on out to Ser Road. Um, we have not moved forward with that that phase, um, but this will make the last connection to I sixty-nine.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, any other questions or comments? If there are none, uh, we will be back on this on July eleventh. I want to thank Mr. Cockrell for coming and talking to us about it.
Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. All right, that takes us to item number nine from the Commissioner's Office. We've got a request, a request for approval of an additional appropriation.
Counsel, I move to approve the Commissioner's request for an additional appropriation and fund one one seven zero dash zero three zero seven Public Safety Local Income Tax Fleet in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars in the services category.
Second.
Got a motion in the second, thank you. And we have Angie Purdy with us today, the Commissioner's Administrator. Ms. Purdy, want to discuss this?
Yeah, hi there. Thank you for having me this evening, and um uh, first of all, I I'm going to apologize right off the bat because I'm actually on vacation, and I thought I was going to be able to remote into my computer. However, apparently I shut off my computer when I left, so I wasn't able to remote in. I don't have a lot of supporting documents to help you if you have questions um with this, which I thought I would have um access to. But um, this is clearly um, it's a request for additional funding um for the maintenance and repair of our um sheriff fleet vehicles. And it um, I was reticent when my our financial manager came to me and said, you know, we're we're down to like eleven thousand or something. It was an original hundred thousand dollar um appropriation. I was ret- reticent to ask, however, we're only halfway through the year, and um I thought it'd be best to just go ahead and throw the whole bit out there. You guys can then determine if you want to give us um the full hundred or if you want to kind of um stagger it out. Um, but at this point in time, the costs um of repairs, and it's actually the parts, because we have a fixed three percent increase um over part costs. Um, but the parts have um increased exponentially, and um that's about it. You know, these cars are are worked hard, and we've done, I think, a good job with our fleet um manager being able to ensure that we're continuing to get new vehicles. Um, as they're they're safer, more reliant, but they still require a lot of service.
Thank you very much, Ms. Purdy, and thanks for coming in uh here while you're away from the county. We're sorry, we're sorry to interrupt all that, but I'll open this up to you. Questions from counsel? Do I have any questions from counselors? Counselor Iverson?
Yeah, uh, so the the request here is for repairs and maintenance. What is the nature of the the repairs at this point? Is it simply that there are parts that we couldn't get a hold of? Is it a supply chain issue, or is it a wear and tear issue? What's going on with the the deputies' cars?
Little bit of both. Um, I mean, they're they're their cars are are their office, right? So they're in there eight hours a day driving around. Um, but part of the problem is a supply issue. We've um our new um vehicles, I believe it was the Durango's, um, came in, and we were unable to get new rotors. And so when the rotor would go out, um, we're having a supply chain issue of getting those rotors in place. And so I know that um Richard, our fleet and ma- um maintenance manager, he's gone to other counties to pick up some of these rotors. I know that um Josh, who also works for maintenance, has done some late-night runs for us to some other counties when he can find them. Um, that's a rotor problem, but in general, uh, just, you know, they by being a specialized vehicle, they have specialized needs when it comes to just maintaining them. Fuel or not fuel, oil, what I was gonna say, um, and things of that nature. But I mean, the the guys on women on our Sheriff's Department take a good, take good care of those vehicles, but they do get service quite a bit.
So just to be clear, we have the rotors. They're not on back order.
Um, we have them as we we've been able to find them as we've needed them. Um, it takes a little bit of time, but yeah, we don't have any. Um, our person who provides service for us isn't able to keep a bunch of those in stock at this point in time.
Okay, and and in terms of maintenance, you you know, you mentioned, you know, oil and other things necessary for the, I mean, all we have all that too, right? I mean, our fleet, you know, manager has all that in stock, even for the specialized vehicles that the Sheriff's Department needs, right?
Yeah, it's actually not, we don't keep it ourselves. We have um, we have a contract with an outside entity that does all of our services for our for our non-highway heavy-duty vehicles, so they take care of everything else. Um, and yeah, they maintain all of that, and they are familiar with all the needs of of those specialized vehicles. Does that help?
Well, yes, I at the, yes, it does. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I had one question I wanted to ask Ms. Purdy. Uh, and and I'm going to kind of tell a real quick story here to illustrate my point. When I was much younger than I am now, I I cut grass at a place here here in the county. And to get honest, sometimes they'd say, you know, Deckard, you you cost us more money in the damage that you've done than we'll ever pay you or we'll ever get out of you. Now, I think this was an exaggeration. I think I was pretty good at cutting that grass. But does the county, do we do we track how damage? And I'm not just saying this about sheriff's vehicles or anyone's vehicles. I'm just, do we keep track of where damage comes from? If there's perennial places that happens or or things like that? I I'm always curious about that, and I know taxpayers just want to make sure that we're watching that, too. Any thoughts on that?
Yeah, most definitely. They um, we keep track, and I I can't speak for the Sheriff's Department, but I am certain that they keep track of um what kind of accident or what kind of um damages are being occur are occurring on these vehicles. And we um will keep track, and actually, our the contractor that we have, um, he he will reach out to Mr. Kreider and let him know if there's something there, if there's a repeat problem with the vehicle, and is is it the vehicle or is it the driver, right? So um, yeah, we have quite a few eyes on on these things.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions, comments? All right, if not, uh, we will move to, I have, I need to do a roll call on this. All right, we we will move to a roll call vote.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes. Did you, did you hear me say yes?
No, I'm sorry. Okay, all right, thank you.
Sorry, yes.
And did I miss anybody?
I've not voted yet.
Oh, Counselor Deck?
Yes.
Oh, there you are. Counselor Deckers.
I'm over here getting the mowing done, yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you. And if you you only knew, actually, I've been bush hogging today and started mowing. And because um Lisa sent me a lovely picture of myself that is on the screen there, and I'm like, oh, yeah, this is great. I've got no makeup, my hair is wet. You guys, I just was happy to be here.
Doing great. We have one or do we have one more for you?
We do. Uh, go ahead and uh read this out. Counsel, I move to approve the Commissioner's request for the creation of a new account line in Fund four eight zero six dash zero 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 twenty fifteen General Obligation Bond, Account Line four zero zero two zero Sheriff four by four.
Second.
All right. Anything on this, Ms. Purdy?
Sure, um, this uh, the original intent for this bond, because this is a bond that we're speaking of here, uh, the original account was Sheriff four by four, and it um, that has been expended with those those vehicles were purchased. Um, since that time, there's still been some money that remains in that particular fund or that bond, I should say. And um, it's been brought to Mr. Kreider's attention that the animal control is in desperate need of new vehicles. And so if we can have this um line created again, back into that particular bond, we should be able to get them on their way with new vehicles for the animal control.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments from counsel? Counselor Iverson?
Yeah, Ms. Purdy, uh, is this four by four for animal control in the Sheriff's Department part of our fleet management plan?
Yeah, yes, sorry.
Great, no, that's, I just wanted to clarify that this this is part of an overarching um system of making sure that our vehicles are adequate for our staff to use.
That is very correct, yes.
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
All right, other questions, comments? I appreciate dealing with this, these these bonds that have sat there and and getting that done as well. All right, let's go to a roll call vote.
We do a voice.
Wait a minute, pub, let's open it up for comment from the public. My apologies. Is there anyone wishing from the public wishing to make comment on this either here in the Nat U Hill or on Zoom? If so, raise your hand or come forward to the podium. Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
All right, have a good one. We're now to item number ten, the Health Department's a request for approval to create a new account line.
Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request for an additional appropriation and Fund eight one five zero dash nine six two three Tana Futures in the amount of ninety-nine thousand four hundred eighty-four dollars in the Personnel category, eight thousand five hundred fifty-six dollars in the Supplies category, and four thousand thirty-eight dollars in the Services category for a total appropriation of one hundred twelve thousand dollars, one hundred twelve thousand and seventy-eight dollars.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Lori Kelly with the Health Department is with us. Ms. Kelly, do you want to talk on this?
Uh, sure. So this is just annual uh renewal of grant funds that helps to support our Futures Family Planning Clinic. Um, services being offered include contraceptives, um, pregnancy and birth control counseling services, pelvic exams, HIV and S I S T I testing. This funding helps to um support our employees and um also helps to support supplies for the clinic.
Thank you very much. We'll open this up to questions or comments from counsel. Any questions or comments? Counselor Munson?
So, Ms. Kelly, I noticed that uh the term for the agreement is October first of last year through September thirtieth of this year. And so we only have about three months for you to spend uh uh these appropriated funds. Um, is that going to, is that going to work out fine?
Uh, surprisingly, it is. It's very interesting how um the grant agency actually works with this funding. So uh typically, every year, the clinic first operates off of Title X funding. So uh the grant agency requires that we um draw off of all of those funds down um uh until pretty much the last dollar is spent, and then at that time, we uh switch over to TANF um to finish out the remainder of the year.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Iverson? Uh, thank you, Mr. Deckard. Uh, thank you for being with us today, Ms. Kelly. Um, my questions are about the resources needed to uh complete the grant and uh meet its requirements. Uh, we may, we're still in a really tight labor market. Do you have enough uh staff on hand to be able to provide the services as detailed in the grant?
Uh, we are operating um again at full um full-time status. So um we did have that transition period from our um nurse practitioner retiring, but we are operating um full-time, and our staffing is slim. Um, so there are periods of time where the um the nurse and the nurse practitioner are actually also running the front office. Um, but they really all work together. Um, they're a great team, and everyone is cross-trained in that area to be able to pitch in where it is needed to be able to continue providing that direct patient care.
Excellent, and and what about the supplies, the the uh long-acting uh contraceptives? Uh, are we going to be able to have all the supplies needed to fulfill that grant here?
Uh, yes, I think so. I think that we'll have enough with that. And we also have um the partnership that we have started with the Path for You program. So that was something um that um I presented to the Commissioners last year. I can't remember the exact month, but that also gives us an opportunity to be able to provide free um contraceptives and um services such as an I U D to um part of our patients, too. So that is helping to also give us just a little bit of extra wiggle room with um these supplies.
Excellent, and it's glad glad to hear that it remains free uh for for everyone that needs it. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from counsel? Seeing none, uh, we will take public comment on this item. Anyone wishing to speak can come forward in the Nat U Hill or raise your hand on Zoom. Seeing none, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Kelly. This takes us to item number eleven, the Aviation Department. Counselor Hawk, you'd mentioned this, and I know that our Airport Director is not able to be with us due to some illness. Uh, but Counselor Iverson?
All right, uh, Counsel, I move to approve the Aviation Department's request for an additional appropriation and Fund four in fund four eight zero one dash zero 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 aviation construction in the amount of thirty-five thousand, one hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty cents in the services category.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. We have Mr. Cockrell back from the legal department to discuss this.
Yes, and I am not as fully vetted on this as, uh, I would normally be when I come, but with Carlos's illness, I think I, I know enough about it to, to be able to present it to you. They are asking for a thirty-five thousand, one hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty cent appropriation. And this will be going towards an assessment of their control tower. The, the federal government has a five-year window to get, uh, grants for the control tower. And that this, this money, if they get the grant to do the upgrade to that control tower, which is forty-eight years old and has a lot of outdated equipment, then this could be used as part of the match for that grant, um, funding. Uh, this last, I think it was January, they changed their engineering consultants for the airport. And so that's why this has kind of gotten a different priority than, than was anticipated last year.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Cockrell. I'll invite counselors with their questions or discussion. I know that Mr. Cockrell's kind of pinch hitting here a little bit. Anyone have questions or comments? Counselor Hawk?
I just know without, uh, the grant support for our airport that we would really be in trouble. So I appreciate all the work that you do helping, uh, the airport and for the airport employees as well. So time to get it done.
Thank you, Counselor Hawk. And I, I do want to know for anyone in the public watching, a lot of what you're seeing here are department heads and elected officials who have gone after outside grant dollars to bring that into your community to support our roads, our things, our airport, you name it, our health. Um, and they do a tremendous job with that. So some of these appropriations you see are us authorizing money that they have gotten from uh, other sources and brought home. And that's the bulk of what we do. Uh, and we're thankful for that as well. All right. Other questions or comments? All right. Uh, anyone from the public wishing to make a comment, either come forward in the Nat U Hill or raise your hand on Zoom? Seeing none, we will do a roll call vote.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And that takes us to item number 12, the emergency management agency. And we're going to be joined by Justin Baker, our, our deputy, uh, EMA director, Mr. Iverson.
Counsel, I move to approve the emergency management agency's request for an additional appropriation in fund one thousand dash zero three six one general fund emergency in the amount of fifty thousand dollars in the services category.
We have a second. Got a motion in a second. Welcome, Mr. Baker. It's good to see you here. And what can you tell us about?
Yes. Good evening. Uh, as most of you guys know, is that the north part of the northwestern part of the county was impacted by a tornado, uh, March thirty-first. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes. Uh, so as I said, the part of the northwestern part of the county was impacted by a tornado on March thirty-first. And, uh, with the tornado, there's a lot of debris and a lot of damage. We had ten houses completely destroyed. We had ten major destroyed. And, uh, that causes a lot of debris and that needs to be picked up. So, uh, with the commissioner's permission, we, we received the permission to get, uh, blow-off dumpsters from KNS and, uh, to help lay down to the residents to help them pick up the debris. And, uh, so, uh, and that's still going on. We do, we are collecting the, we are starting to collect the dumpsters uh, starting this week. And we have collected a couple already. And, uh, it's not daily cost. It's just whenever they get dumped, whenever they get, uh, dumpsters filled up and we call KNS or the homeowner calls KNS and they picking them up and that's when the charge is. And, uh, we did apply for PA public assistance with FEMA and the Indian Department of Homeland Security. And we just had our briefing today. So that's in process. And I'll help, that could possibly help, uh, we coops on the cost, portions of the cost.
Thank you very much. And, uh, we appreciate that update. I'll open this up for questions or comments from counsel. Counselor Crossley?
Thank you for assisting the residents in the cleanup. I just had a quick question. You mentioned that it was ongoing still. Um, do you have an approximate timeline of when you would estimate when the cleanup would, that you think that you'll be done with cleanup?
Uh, cleanup is going on, uh, dumpsters. We hope to have them picked up by the end of this month. We did, we have collected a few, a few of them who have not, who don't need them anymore. But, uh, we had a couple residents that called saying, hey, I didn't get one and they requested them. Just because they starting to get into the grime of cleaning up and stuff. Um, but yeah, hopefully by the end of this month, we will have them all cleaned up and stuff.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you. And again, I just want to reiterate, uh, major kudos to you all for helping. That's, that's a big task. Um, so thank you very much for all that you're doing with that.
Thank you.
Counselor Hawk?
Uh, yes. Uh, those of us that live out in that general vicinity and have been there many times as we were growing up. We appreciate what you can do there for the families and to try to help clean up that mess. This has been a joint effort by a lot of different county departments, the highway department, your department, and also the county assessor, because she was out there meeting with people and making sure that the adjustments were made, uh, for their assessments, that they weren't having to pay for, uh, taxes on a house that no longer existed. Um, and so we appreciate what you can do. You know, we can control a lot of things, but we cannot control the weather.
No, we can.
And so all we can do is just, um, respond to it as best we can. And I appreciate you doing that for those citizens. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Counselor Hawk. Counselor Munson?
Thank you. Thank you for coming, Mr. Baker. Um, I wanted to ask about FEMA and what, uh, what you all expect in terms of timeline and, and their decision-making?
Yes. Um, so, uh, at the very beginning, FEMA got involved with individual assistance, uh, declaration, which is, uh, for the citizens and the residents who got impacted. Um, they could apply online or we had a disaster recovery center opened up at the Steinsville Elementary School for a couple of weeks. Last month, and they were able to go apply for, uh, assistance with FEMA, or they can apply, or they can also apply for, uh, SBA, uh, small business administration for a loan. And, uh, so it's always been on table, uh, that actually the deadline for that is tomorrow. Oh, or no, the fifteenth. So first day. And, uh, uh, but the public and, uh, assistance that started to come as soon as we started to get all the costs from the act of the storm response. We got the costs in highway department. We got costs in the Steinsville Fire Department.
The many, many departments and agencies. Yes.
So, uh, we had to meet a threshold. Each county has a threshold that is, uh, accumulated by the population. And the state has a threshold too, that they have to meet. And, uh, for the whole state. And then we got that for the state. So that's why we did the briefing today. And, uh, we had to have everything in by the thirtieth. And, uh, after the thirtieth, we'll have a couple FEMA, uh, personnel down here, pretty much camping out here.
Okay.
And, uh, helping us throughout the process.
So thank you for explaining that.
I, I just want to echo the other comments, uh, gratefulness for all that you're all doing. I, I learned years ago in, in my, some of my federal service work, that when there is a disaster, there's never enough that you can do. And I think whatever EMA ever thinks the county needs to be doing, try to point us that way. And if we can find the resources, we'll do it. Certainly when the disaster happens, those families have to find things that don't, sometimes don't exist. And the fact that we've got that out there is, is probably one of the least that we can do. Um, and advise us if there's other things, particularly I know I was with you at the briefing today. When we need to get the word out to people that may have resettled in other locations or they've, they've gone into different parts. When we need to get the word out here, we can do it here on these mics and our meeting, commissioners meeting, you name it, we'll figure it out. So just please let us know. With that, we're going to go to Counselor Hawk.
Just, just as a little aside, my mother-in-law grew up on Wolf Mountain Road. After this happened, I had so many people say, I've never heard, never heard of that place.
I've never.
And I heard about it often. Um, so the Waldens, uh, that's, that's my family.
Yeah. It's a beautiful part of our county, right there on the edge, real pretty.
And all the lessons are very tight. So I made it nice and easy too.
Yeah. Thank you very much. All right. We're going to open it up. Any public comment on this item on our agenda? Either here in the Nat U Hill or on Zoom. Raise your hand on Zoom. Seeing none, we will do a roll call vote.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Okay. It's going to take us to item B, which is also from EMA.
Counsel, uh, let's see, I need to make sure that I am on B. I was about to read A again. That would not be helpful. Counsel, I move to approve the emergency management agency's request for an additional appropriation in fund one one five two dash zero 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 zero, emergency planning slash right to know in the amount of six thousand dollars in the capital category.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, Mr. Baker.
Okay. So back in, uh, December twenty twenty-two, we kind of made a mistake and we, uh, brought this up. At the long time, uh, due to budgeting and stuff. Um, but the local emergency planning committee for the county, O E P C, uh, has approved the fund uh, out of the light to know funds to acquire, um, detection instruments, uh, for different chemicals for our local hazmat team, which is Manlo Fire District. And, uh, this will help them, uh, enhance their availability to, uh, find those chemicals and to protect the citizens by making sure they get the right chemical so that you can clean up the scene to the best of the ability. Um, so uh, we're just, uh, asking for the, this will come from the carry forward bounce into the emergency response, uh, equipment line unto the light fun.
Okay. Thank you very much. Questions or comments from counsel? Not seeing questions or comments. All right. So we'll open this up to any, uh, public that has a comment. I see, uh, it looks like someone in Zoom says I have public comments. So we will invite Sam Dove to be recognized for public comment. Thank you very much, Mr. Dove. All right. Any other comments from the public? Seeing none, we will go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk? Counselor, Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Right. Thank you very much. That takes us to item, pardon me, I jumped ahead, item C.
Mm-hmm. Counsel, I move to approve the emergency management agency's request for an additional appropriation in fund four nine three one dash zero 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 zero, emergency management Walmart grant in the amount of one thousand dollars in the services category.
Second.
Okay.
Okay. So, uh, the department has teamed up with the local fire department and police department, uh, to help them purchase accountability tags, which is the tags that on scene of emergency, they will hang it up on a poster board. And, uh, it keeps accountability. So whenever they go inside the house or if they're on the scene, that tells them that they're on scene. Um, and once they get off scene or when they get out of the house, they take it off. And, uh, so it's a safety tool that they use on scene. And, uh, we have done it in the past before Jamie and I's, uh, time, uh, helped the county agencies get funding for these tags. And, uh, so I decided to do it again to help out local police department and local fire department. And, uh, we got the, our work from the Walmart commu-, uh, community foundation. And so we're happy about that. So we'll just, we'll just seek in the appropriation.
All right. Questions or comments from counsel? Counselor Iverson?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, uh, the, the tags that will be available, will they be available to the, uh, fire protection district as well as Bloomington Fire Department? Uh, and to all the first responders throughout the community or, or just to, you know, in certain jurisdictions?
These are, uh, right now, this, with this grant, I'm applying for another grant for, uh, this will help out the Ellisville Police Department and, uh, Bloomington City Fire Department. Uh, I asked them, the Fire District, they said they were good on accountability tags from the last grant that I think was twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one, I believe. And, uh, so, uh, and then next one, I'm going to help out Steinsville, being Boston Fire Department.
Oh, okay.
So I'm applying for another grant soon and hopefully I'll get that one.
Sure. It's great that Walmart's doing this and, uh, I'm sure the folks out in Ellisville are going to appreciate it.
Other questions or comments? All right. Seeing none, we will take public comment on this. Any members here in the room or on Zoom? Just raise your hand. Okay. We will go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. All right. We're now on to item number thirteen, and this is from the probation department. Uh, Counsel Iverson?
Counsel, I move to approve the probation department's request in fund eight one six zero dash nine six two one, Justice Partners Grant for the creation of a new account line, three zero zero two eight, training slash travel, and for a category transfer of two thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars from the supplies category to the services category.
Second.
All right. We've got a motion in a second and we have the privilege to be joined by Troy Hatfield from our department.
Thank you. Uh, Troy Hatfield, Deputy Chief Probation Officer. And, um, basically this item and the next one, uh, deal with, uh, the same grant that we have been receiving for the past several years. It's a Justice Partners Grant. It's a grant that is originally, the money comes from the Department of Mental Health and Addiction. Um, that is provided to the judicial branch of government. So the Supreme Court, uh, the Office of Judicial Administration, then subgrants out money to different, uh, all of the different counties, um, to provide services, uh, to the people that we serve. This grant, um, particularly serves, uh, reentry purposes. So people who have been incarcerated for a lengthy period of time in our local jail, um, we're providing services or, well, we're contracting with Centerstone to help provide services for reentry, um, uh, for those folks into their community, um, when they are released to help ease that transition. Um, over the past couple of years, we haven't spent those funds down to zero, and this will allow us to do that. Um, we've got approval from our granting body to, um, move some money, um, from that supplies line that we didn't exhaust, um, into a training line so that we can train staff, um, in different areas to be able to deliver services to, uh, those that we serve. Um, so that's, uh, what we're requesting, uh, approval for.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments from counsel? Counselor Hawk?
Yes, I noticed that you said reentry services are for those who've been in our jail. What if they are, uh, really a department? really a Department of Correction that we're holding?
Sure. So we do have folks that come into the community from the Department of Correction. Everybody that the Department of Correction notifies us who are coming back to the community, we look at some services that could be available to them. Some of those people are kind of funneled into our reentry court. A problem solving court that really helps that transition back into the community. And some are coming back on community supervision. So we will assign them, you know, a supervision officer and a provide services as well. And get them tied into local resources in our community to help ease that transition.
And just as a matter of record, the ones coming back from the DOC who's been ordered by the courts to attend some of our like problem solving courts, they're not necessarily from Monroe County. Is that correct? To begin with, I mean, since we are the district, I think it's District Five, so we might be receiving inmates from any place that the judge decides to send here.
So you know, that has been possible. It's typically those who have been sentenced from our courts who would return back and maybe are sentenced to community supervision term after the serving their time in DOC are the ones who may come back to the community. Others who have community supervision time out of other courts and other jurisdictions could ask to be transferred as a courtesy supervision in our county. But there are only, there are certain circumstances where we have to accept them. There are other circumstances where we don't have to. So it's very dependent upon each person in each case.
The reason why I asked a question, there's been some people recently question the racial makeup in, in our jail. And that's not, I just want people to know that when you look at the jail bookings, some of them are on hold for other counties, they're on hold for Department of Correction. That does not mean that they were a part of our local folks that were arrested for doing something here locally. Some are, some are not.
Thank you very much. Counsel Iverson.
Yeah, thank you for being here and talking us about this important grant. This really helps. As you know, that we don't have to use all of our resources in certain areas and grants really help us expand our services. So thank you for being here. In your write-up, you said that the reentry service is currently being provided will be unaffected and diminished by this request. How many individuals have, are we serving right now with this grant? That range is okay, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't look that up before I came. You know, I know we're somewhere in the neighborhood of about 50 or more a year. But I could give you some exact numbers at a later date, but I know we are serving quite a few individuals that are coming through. Some of those services had been provided while they were still incarcerated, so we can prepare for the day one as soon as they walk out. And then we continue those services once they're out in the community as well. But Centerstone has been a good partner in that, and we hope to continue through the life of the grant.
That's great. Thank you so much.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll move to public comment on this item. Any public wishing to make a comment, raise your hand on Zoom or come forward in the room. Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right, thank you. That takes us on to item number B, item letter B.
Counsel, I move to approve the probation department's request in Fund 8160-9622, Justice Partners Grant for a category transfer of $2,550 from the Supplies category to the Services category.
Second.
Got a motion and a second.
Again, same grant year or same grant, just a different grant year so that we can exhaust and expend all of the funds that were provided to the county.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from counsel? Counselor Iverson?
No, I was slipping my pen.
Oh, okay. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll take any public comment on this. Again, come forward in the room or raise your hand on Zoom. Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Now we're on to letter C.
Counsel, I move to approve the probation department's request in Fund 9105-0000, Indiana Judicial Supreme Court Grant for the creation of a new account lines, a creation of new account lines as presented on the agenda, and to simultaneously approve additional appropriations of $9,998 in the Services category.
All right, we've got a motion and a second, Mr. Hatfield.
Okay, so this is an annual grant that we receive from the Indiana Supreme Court. They have discretionary funding that they choose to provide problem solving courts across the state, the opportunity to apply for grants up to $10,000 a year. So we apply for this grant every year. We receive this grant every year, and hopefully we will continue to do that in the future. For this year, some of the focus of the grant is one is to provide some money for training for our problem solving court staff to attend trainings to stay up on their skills and and their knowledge to serve our clients. And then also to provide bus vouchers, bus passes for our clients and problem solving courts on a regular basis, as well as to help ease the cost of drug testing for any, for our clients by providing those payments through the grant as well to supplement that.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments from counsel? Counselor Munson.
Yes, Mr. Hatfield, I I think, I think of our problem solving courts as being multiple courts because we have several varieties of problem solving courts. And but in terms of the granting, are they all considered just one central court?
Yeah, so we have a drug treatment court. That's the longest standing problem solving court that we've had, and that's been in operation since 1999. And then about, well, it's been more than five years now. It's been a while. We added a mental health court, a reentry court, and a veterans treatment court to the mix. So now we've got four problem solving courts that are operating. This grant will provide for all four of those courts and the participants in all four of those courts.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Seeing none, we'll take comments from the public on this item. Anyone wishing to speak either come forward or raise your hand on Zoom. Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right, letter D.
Counsel, I move to approve the probation department's request for a fund to fund cash transfer of $1,143.93 from Fund 1122-0000, Community Corrections Grants to Fund 9141-0000, Community Corrections Grants. And to simultaneously approve the additional appropriation Fund 9141-0000 of $1,143.93 in the Personnel category.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, Mr. Hatfield.
Okay, so this one's a little unusual. I've not had this one come up before, but our auditor's office was doing a, you know, an audit of our funds. And, and one thing that they came across was a three-year-old check that came back into our account because it was never deposited or cashed or what have you. And this happened, this was a check for the grant fund year for 2020. So quite a few years ago, we contacted the Department of Correction, our funding agency, and they said, we don't want the money back. Go ahead and apply it to any service that you're providing now through the current grant and spend it out. We receive a little over a million and a half dollars a year, 1.5 million a year from the Department of Correction to help provide services. That still doesn't quite fund everything that we do. So this, every little bit helps. So we'd like to be able to allocate that and spend it for this grant year as well.
Awesome. Thanks to the auditor's office for helping us with that. Any questions or comments from counsel?
That's the way they said they didn't want the money back. Okay, we'll keep it.
Absolutely.
Well, and a good thing we found the check in the first place. That's quite a fine.
Or, yeah, we, I mean, they had already come in and audited all of our funds for that grant year, and we scored with no issues, no problems. But then the auditor's office came across this and said, hey, we've got some money. What do you want us to do with it?
Yeah. Any other comments from counsel? Seeing none, we'll ask for any public comment on this, same way as I've said all night. Seeing none, let's do a roll call vote.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right, thank you very much. That takes us to letter E.
Counsel, I move to approve the probation department's request in Fund 9143-0000, JDAI Coordination for the Creation of a New Account Lines as Presented on the Agenda and to simultaneously approve additional appropriations of $3,600 in the Supplies category and $11,400 in the Services category for a total appropriation of $15,000.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second, Mr. Hatfield.
Yeah, so the last two items that I have kind of go together. This is part of our Juvenile Detention Alternatives Initiative. Our county has been involved in this initiative since 2014, and I was kind of going through my head about how much grant money we received since that time, and we're close to a million dollars.
That's huge.
That we've brought into the county to help provide services. And the purpose of detention alternatives is to keep our kids in our community. Right? And to provide any services that we can safely in the community that keeps them at home and provides interventions so that they make it on a better path. And we keep kids out of institutions for as long as possible, and hopefully, you know, for the vast majority of kids forever that they, that they never have to enter that. So this grant helps us do that. We provide, the first part of it is the $15,000, it's kind of provides for coordination of services, helps with administrative costs, helps with some software, some training, things like that. The second piece of it is really that programming piece. All of those interventions and services that we're able to partner agency with in our community, partner with agencies to provide in our community like Girls Inc., like Centerstone, like The Warehouse, and places like that. So we would love your support to be able to continue on with this grant and have it appropriated and spend the money out.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments from Counsel? Counselor Crossley.
I was just gonna say thank you for, that's amazing that to date that you've received that much of funding, and I just appreciate the work that you all do. And also the fact that you are trying to keep the youth out of institutions, because we already know like the, the cycle of all of that. So I definitely appreciate, I don't think your department gets enough credit for all the work that you do, and I just want to publicly say that. So kudos to you and your staff and team for all that you do.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes, back in the day, long, long time ago, when we had the budgets, we called it the Welfare Budget, but it was the Department of Children's Budget. We were able to really track the numbers of the youth that went into detention. On average, it was like less than six. And not many at all going to DOC. Do we know what the numbers are averaging now?
Yeah, actually, so we write an annual report, our courts do, and includes the probation department. I put that information in our annual report every year. You can find it online on the website for the Monroe County Government website, and if you click into the Circuit Court, you know, part of the website, you'll see a listing of annual reports on there. Right now, I think as far as detention numbers go, we, our average daily population is about one to one and a half, you know, you know, sometimes it's two, sometimes it's one. Very small numbers that we're talking about. And if I remember correctly, I don't believe we sent a single child to the Department of Correction last year. So, you know, we've made leaps and bounds over the years in terms of you know, keeping kids in our community safely, but also the services that we're providing to kids and families.
Just as a matter of just logistics, if a juvenile is picked up for committing a crime, we really don't have the regular place that some, some communities have, that would be a holding place. At least that's the way it used to be. Do we know, are they held in, in our jail in a separate area? Or where are they held until they can meet with a judge?
So if, if law enforcement comes in contact with the youth in our community, one of the first things that they do is, is call us, call a juvenile probation officer. We have somebody on call 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And talk to us a little bit about the situation. We try to find out a little bit more about what's going on. And whether or not that youth can safely remain in the home, or if there's some kind of services that we need to provide immediately. If by chance, you know, public safety is an issue, or even safety within the home and the family is an issue, then we'll, we'll look for some alternatives if it's necessary. We'll often use our local Monroe County Youth Shelter and turn to them first because we want our kids here. We want them close to their families. We want them close to the services that they're going to receive in the community. If it, if it's elevated status to where we do feel like there's a safety issue, then there are a couple of different centers around the state that we may have to use. But we do bring them back. They are in front of a judge within two business days, 48 hours, two court days. So, you know, if that happens on a Monday night, typically they're back Tuesday morning or Wednesday morning to see the judge and to figure out what can we do safely in the community with interventions or anything to try to keep our kids here and provide the services here.
Thank you.
Counselor Iverson. I just wanted to, to point out that I don't think there's any more fitting tribute to Judge Tyler Farrow and her legacy of protecting families and children in our community than for us to continue to support this evidence-based program. A million dollars over time, keeping it down to one or two kids, you know, as an average.
Just amazing.
It is absolutely amazing. This is an evidence-based program. And to, to think about the, the impact that the judge left and the fact that, you know, we are trying to walk in her footsteps and we're not, you know, always successful, but that's really where my, my heart is in this item and the next item is, is just so fitting that we're doing this tonight.
Yeah, and, and you know, when I first came here, Judge Tyler Farrow was on the bench, and I was a juvenile probation officer starting and, you know, working under here. From her legacy carrying on with Judge Galvin and then Judge Holly Harvey has taken over juvenile delinquency cases, and their leadership has really guided us and provided the pathway for us to kind of move in that direction. And it's been wonderful along with the rest of the Board of Judges.
Well said.
Thank you very much, Counselor Hart.
I wanted to also add, a lot needs to be said, thank you to the local taxpayers here. Because when, when it was under the Welfare Budget, Department of Child Services, we kept employed. We put four juvenile probation officers in that budget. And, you know, the state would say, well, you don't pay for any of the, well, yes, we do. We kept it in a separate budget area. And so if we had, if no other county was doing that, Monroe County did that because we did not want to see our youth being shipped off someplace. And in addition to which, with our youth services and the dollars that go into there, the expanded services that's going into there helps a great deal as well. As a matter of fact, I believe more dollars are going in to there than what I know when we added the, increased the amount that was to go in there, the rate. I remember Judge Galvin saying, now if that's bringing in more than what is the appropriate amount, then we could reduce it back down. And, and that can go up and down and go up until it gets the whole dollar amount that we're, we're allowed to bring in, but we don't bring in narrowly the amount that was passed at the state level to allow us to do this. Of course, the state thought they were approving us to build a detention center. And some of us bought the detention center and, and didn't want it to happen. I know not everybody agreed with that. Some wanted the detention center. But others felt like we could do a better job by, by treatment and helping in that fashion. So I just don't know with the world being what it's like, how long we can continue to have those low numbers. But I, I hope for a long time. Uh, but I I hope for a long time.
Thank you very much. And with that, we will ask if the public wants to make any comments on this. You can come forward here in the room or raise your hand on Zoom. Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Hawk.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Now, you've got one more here, uh, item or letter F.
Counsel, I move to approve the probation department's request and fund nine one four five dash zero 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 zero. J D I programming for the creation of new account lines as presented on the agenda. And to simultaneously approve additional appropriations of fifteen thousand fifty dollars in the supplies category. And thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars in the services category for a total appropriation of fifty-five thousand dollars.
Second.
All right, Mr. Hatfield.
Yeah, again, this is a part of that juvenile detention alternatives uh funding. Uh, this is the programming piece of that grant. Um, you'll notice a a good bulk of that is in contractual and that uh we partner with agencies here in town. Um, and in the county to help provide services to our youth uh to keep them. Uh, well, to hopefully keep them out of any kind of institution or placement and uh keep them here local and and on a better path.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments from counsel?
No.
All right, seeing none, invite public comment on this item. Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Hawk. Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Excuse me. Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you.
All right, you okay?
You're gonna make it?
Thank, all right, thank you, Mr. Hatfield. We appreciate you coming in. We're gonna now go to item fourteen on our agenda, and that is our highway department.
Counsel, I move to approve the highway department's request and fund one one three five dash zero 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 zero. Cumulative bridge for a category transfer of fifty thousand dollars from the services category to the supplies category.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. We want to welcome Ms. Lisa Ridge uh to the podium. What can you tell us?
Good evening. Um, back in April, we had done a transfer um for backfill materials. And we took that from our pipes line, and we would like to uh transfer now from one category to the other. To replenish that transfer after we completed getting the backfill funds.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from counsel?
My only comment would be that when people are putting together the agenda, put all the highway stuff together. Makes sense.
I didn't realize at the time that Lisa was going to be presenting, so I didn't know that. Yeah.
Sorry about that. Okay, other questions or comments? Seeing none, I will ask if the public has any comments on item fourteen A. Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Hawk.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right, thank you very much. It takes us to letter B.
Counsel, I move to approve the highway department's request and fund one one six nine dash zero 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 zero. Local road and street for category transfer of one hundred ten thousand dollars from the supplies category to the services category.
Second.
Like Ms. Ridge.
Um, so Sample Road is an actually a federally funded project. However, there's portions of the project that do not receive reimbursement. So we will need to pay for that out of our local road and street budget. So that's why we're requesting the transfer.
Thank you. Questions or comments from counsel?
Counselor Iverson. I just wanted to state publicly, I fly pretty regularly and I'm constantly driving uh past Sample Road. It's it just looks so great. It just it's just such a great benefit to our community, whether it's leaving or just coming back home. It's just such a welcome sign that you're back home.
Thank you. It's it's good to get these, I think that started in two thousand fourteen. Um, but actually, the road should, um, we should be striping next week. And that's pretty much our last thing that we can open up the road.
Sounds good. All right, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll take public comment on this. Seeing no public comment, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Hawk. Sorry, Counselor Hawk.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right, move to the next item on the agenda, C.
Counsel, I move to approve the highway department's request and fund one one seven six dash zero 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 zero. Motor vehicle highway for category transfer of fifty thousand dollars from the personnel category to the supplies category.
Second.
Thank you. Motion and a second, Ms. Ridge.
So we are requesting to um make this transfer into some supply lines. Uh, we kind of pulled all the budgets and since it's mid-year to kind of see where we were at, maybe where we needed some extra funds. And this is two of the areas that we felt like we needed um in stone and gravel and signs for hopefully the rest of the year.
Good. Thank you very much. Go to counsel comment, Counselor Iverson.
So you started the year with a very ambitious goal. You wanted to pave, you know, more miles of road than you ever have before. How are we doing on that? I I are you?
We're doing great.
Good, good, good.
It's still our goal to finish those forty-two. It's our goal to have paved forty-six miles of road, which doesn't sound like a lot. Uh, last year, I think it was twenty-four miles. Um, but it just takes a lot of prep work. That's why we run low in the pipes and the 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 backfill materials. Takes a lot of work. Our crews do a tremendous job. Our bridge crew, our stormwater crew, our highway crews of getting these roads ready. Uh, we have them actually, all the bids, all the projects that um. The council has helped funded um through the ARPA funds and also through your rainy day fund. Every one of those projects have been bid out. They've been awarded to a contractor, so they will all be completed, should be this year. The only one that would be outstanding would be Marlin Hills, just because we're doing a more extensive drainage study.
Sure.
That's should be back to us in August, um, just because we want to make sure the the paving lasts. Um, so it was an older subdivision. Um, but yeah. Um, hopefully, I might get a little bit closer to fifty miles, just because we're adding a little bit, just because the bids are coming in pretty good for us. Um, that's good to hear. So, yeah, um, I think we'll succeed.
Thanks for the status update. It's it's really exciting to see the crews out and about. I just see them everywhere, so.
They they work hard.
Yeah, they are hard workers and and they're doing a good job. Thanks.
Thank you.
Counsel Munson.
So I want to, I want to pass on the many comments I hear from the public. They are really excited. About having these roads fixed up and paved, and they're looking forward to the projects that are on the books also. Um, we get to hear about the problems when there are problems, but we also get to hear the, and we pass those on to you. But we also get to hear uh people's great satisfaction with with what's been done. And it's important to pass that on to you and your team as well.
Thank you, and I will do that.
Thanks.
Uh, yes, just a last day or two, a friend of mine uh put pictures on Facebook. Uh, the work that's being done on the road in front of his house. And it's like they're doing like the whole strip, so there's not like a center. Uh, it's like.
Was that Gardner Road? If it was recent, it was last Thursday and Friday, Gardner Road. So they they probably did what what they call it as one pool.
Such a way that that it was the entire road. And I didn't even know that was possible, but I thought it was really interesting. And that he was even explaining why it was better and why there wouldn't be the breakdown from that center line. And I just thought that was pretty amazing that a citizen would take the time to report on that and send the pictures. And and brag on the highway department, so.
It is, it's very beneficial if we can do, it's a more narrow road that you can do those one pools with. Um, typically, we close the road, which is um. Not favorable, but that's that's why we do it, so we can end up with a better product that lasts longer.
Well, it's just exciting, and who would believe that you really could get this much done, and you did, so.
Thank you. It's it it it's it's great to get that much done. We still have a lot to do. Um, but we'll get there just a little bit at a time.
All right, with that, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll go to public comment on this item. Those wishing to comment, either come forward in here or raise your hand on Zoom. Seeing no takers, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Hawk.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right, let's take us to letter D.
Counsel, I move to approve the highway department's request and fund one one nine seven dash zero 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 zero. Stormwater management for an additional appropriation of fifty thousand dollars in the supplies category.
We need a second.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, Ms. Ridge.
Um, so this is our fleet maintenance line where we have our equipment repaired. Uh, we've had some pretty extensive repairs to our grader. Um, basically, we work our gradals very hard. Um, the storms, the tornado, um, that's when we use those gradals that we have. They take, um. It's a big piece of equipment, and it's very expensive to have it repaired. Um, we're looking into, um, we looked and we have almost five thousand miles on that piece of equipment. Um, we're trying to work with the uh manufacturer to see what is the best route for a piece of equipment. That's, you know, basically a half a million dollars. Trade-in value, what point, um, where do you retire it um to to salvage some of the value out? So we're not having to finance a brand new one at that price tag. So we're looking at our options on moving forward. Um, what they consider max hours um for a piece of equipment of that magnitude. So um, this is what ran our fleet maintenance line short.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Ridge. Any questions or comments from counsel, Counselor Hawk?
Yes, when we're doing an additional uh on a separate fund, this is not like in the general fund where there's money there to make up the difference. Uh, did you look at it and subtract out what your uh dollar amount is? That you need to hold back for your budget that you have already in place? And and then you looked at this, and you know that you still have that kind of cash setting there, you believe. I'm assuming you did that and worked with.
If we still have remaining cash, yeah.
To make sure that we're okay on that. And as a reminder, and I know you know this, but as a reminder to the public, to us. Is if this annexation goes through, remember that these dollars that come in to support stormwater. Uh, will, it's tied to where the property is. And so we would not be receiving this if this annexation that comes through. We will see a drastic reduction. It isn't like uh on the ones, it's rate controlled. And so the rate times the assessed value, no matter where you are. This is, you pay it for wherever your property is. So if that property is annexed in the city, that money will no longer come to the county. You you, I know that you already know this, but many in the public do not know that. And I just keep saying, we need to watch and try to stop. Getting county killed financially with this annexation.
Thank you, Counselor Hawk. Any other questions or comments from counsel? Seeing no questions or comments, we'll go to public comment. Public wishing to speak, raise your hand on Zoom or come forward in the Nat U Hill. Seeing none, we will do a roll call vote on this item.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Hawk.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Ridge. We'll move on to item number fifteen. This is a request from the council office.
Counsel, I move to approve the request to amend resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero nine. A resolution establishing the Justice Fiscal Advisory Committee.
Right, I understand. To speak on this, we we do need a second on that. All right, uh, to speak on this, I understand we have either Counselor Iverson or Molly Turner with our legal.
You guys start things off, or should I start things off?
I defer to you, Hover.
All right, great. So uh, we have uh two changes to this document. We'll start on section C. Uh, in the uh, on the packet online, this is the highlighted section on page one hundred and sixty-two. So go, if you uh were presenting this on the screen, scroll down. There it is, in the highlighted section. Um, we uh wanted to clarify some of the confusion around uh the way that we nominate non-voting members. That um those non-voting members can appear in person, they can appear in Zoom, or they can appear by proxy. So we wanted to clarify that if, for instance, the Board of Judges um wants to have a criminal judge uh attend. But then they have a court date that comes up, then a a proxy member could attend. And the same is true with a person who with lived experience, um, that if a a person um is uh not able to attend one of the meetings. Then they can have another proxy come in, and we can rotate folks uh in and out like that as the case may be. Any further comments uh from legal?
And um, members of the J F A C talked about or discussed this um proposed change at their first J F A C meeting. Um, the other thing that this change does is previously, the resolution read. One representative from each of the following stakeholders will serve as ex officio members. And since ex officio by definition means virtue of office, s- some of the people listed are not office holders. And so we are clarifying the language, um, which may be semantics in my legal head to non-voting. And it also delegates the authority um to J F A C members to appoint of those one representatives. I do have an additional change that isn't reflected in your packet, um, and it's in section C as well. Um, so. When we looked at this uh resolution um for the first time, and it was passed by the entire council. I added some things kind of mid-meeting on the fly. And um, one of the things I added was these two questions that um Councilmember Munson proposed. Um, I left some words out, and when I read it in my head, it, you know, those words were there. But then when Ms. Moser read them on the paper, she graciously pointed out that what was in my head was not in paper. So I'm adding the words are available to form a full sentence.
Those verbs.
Yeah, they're not helping verbs, though.
Not helping this time. And there there's one more uh change I think we wanted to make up in, I believe, section one. Where we wanted to clarify that the leadership of this uh body uh would be rotating. Uh, so that uh individuals uh would, the three members would be rotating per meeting. And that we would also be seeking to create uh an administrative chair as well as a meeting chair. The administrative chair would be able to help guide the administrative process uh between meetings. And the meeting chair would be that rotating chair during the meetings.
Yes, and so I have proposed a language that I would like to add to the resolution. Um, the the proposed language that incorporates that idea was not discussed directly. Like, I didn't have it on the screen for J F A C to review, but the language that I'd like to add encompasses the intent of J F A C.
Do you want to share that?
I'm getting ready to share my screen right now. So to add that language, I just um am going to propose a subsection or section three, which is committee structure. And that language is currently displayed on the screen. Oh, I made it really big. Um, so. Members of the committee will have one administrative. Members of the committee will have one administrative chair. That chair will provide staff direction. And then there will be a rotating chair with the responsibility of preparing the agenda and facilitating the meeting for discussion. The document does provide for person to fulfill that administrative chair. And then provides the J F A C the ability to change the administrative chair if they feel the necessary. So that it, that section is language that was not reviewed at the J F A C meeting, but I'm proposing for clarity and to embody the intent of what was said at J F A C.
Okay.
Counselors. Let me clarify as well that this is, uh, in, in, as I recall it, this is the intent of J F A C and what we discussed our last meeting. And also I am, uh, at least in my estimation, able and willing to serve as the initial administrator chair.
Yeah. Okay. Let's go to questions or comments from council then on this. Any questions or comments? I, I agree, uh, the sentiment that whatever this needs to be to make this work efficiently for the members. Who, who know that better, they know what shoe they need to wear to get to where the, the goal is, where they're walking. I would offer this just kind of my, my own personal view. I wouldn't mess with this resolution much more than this. Um, uh, I think that once you have it, just go with that. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, if something is missing here, I kind of figured that out in practice. Uh, unless there's such an overwhelming need that you have to come back, uh, because I think it'll get you into resolution creep and, and not into the goal. And that's to get there. Uh, any other comments or question? Oh, yeah, Ms. Turner King.
I did want to clarify my clarification, I guess. At J F A C, there was the discussion of the rotating chair, which is a fluid idea on boards and commissions as we haven't operated a board and commission under that scheme before. Um. After the J F A C meeting, what became clear to staff, in particular Ms. Moser, is that with the rotating chair, it became difficult to see, like, if she has a question on guidance on who to contact, who does she contact? And so the proposal of an administrative chair was not discussed at J F A C. But I'm including it as a suggestion. So for basically staff sanity, um, and I just wanted to clarify that they did not talk about that at J F A C.
Okay. Lots of communication going to be required, but we know that, right? Okay. Any other comments or questions from council?
Counselor Hawk.
I would just say, Mr. President, let's let this group just go ahead and meet and do whatever. And they don't need to come back here every time they want to, you know, cross a T. We've got things to do. Somebody wants to have a separate committee, go for it. It's not, it's not even, no matter what they decide, it's not final. It's still going to be our final decision. So go for it. Do it.
Yeah. All right. Any other comments or questions? Counsel Crossley.
Um, to that point, yeah, I think we, we are going forward and I think we are trying to do that. I think we all are learning as this is a new committee that we have put together. Um, and of course, now that we know what we need to do, we just need to go ahead and do it. I think we will. I think it's us just trying to make sure that, and maybe we're being a little too cautious at times with things. But I think for the most part, we're just trying to make sure that we are being open, honest and transparent with a lot of things that are going on. Of course, we know that all seven of us have the final say, um, in, in regards to fiscal things. But we also just want to make sure that we are all on the same page with things. So it's just a little bit of housekeeping rules of things. And of course, we will just go with it or just do it like Nike.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? Let's see if the public has any comments on this resolution amendment, uh, brought today. Raise your hand on Zoom or come forward in the Nat U Hill. Seeing none, we're going to go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Hawk.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right. Thank you very much. That takes us to item number sixteen on our agenda. This is a request from our auditor's office. We do have Ms. Uh, Gregory with us today.
Counsel, I move to approve the auditor's office request and fund eight nine five zero dash zero zero zero. The American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA for the creation of a new account line. Three, six, seven, one, four, ARPA sub program support. And to simultaneously approve an additional appropriation of one hundred sixteen thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars in the services category.
Second.
Good evening, council. Um, as you noted, this is a request for, um, ARPA program assistance. Um, described in the management letter, but Baker Tilly is prepared to assist with all aspects of the counties that ARPA program, um, from planning and strategizing projects, um, to policy and compliance, to monitoring and reporting. Um, in the engagement letter, it is noted that, um, the estimated program end date, um, would be the twelve thirty-one of twenty-six. Um, and they expected the program to wrap up at the time. However, I do, we will still have reporting requirements after that time. So I do anticipate a need a little bit further than their date, just to be completely transparent. Um, so there might be a slight additional expense there. Um, any questions?
Yeah, uh, so in the process of, uh, seeking, uh, bids for, for this, uh, I think we learned some new information about the way that we are going about, um, our ARPA projects. And certainly we've been hearing from the public about the county's stance on ARPA and the way that we're, you know, using these, these dollars. And I, and so one of the things that I think that, uh, I think was clear for me was that having these, uh, uh, a, a large number of small projects is very difficult administratively, rather than having a smaller number of large projects. Is, do I have that correct?
That is accurate. Um, so as we were going through and selecting, um, a potential firm to assist with this, um, we were told by a couple, well, all of them, actually, we interviewed three, um, that our county has quite a few projects, um, more than all other counties, I believe. Um, and I mean, it is, is wonderful that we want to, um, assist as many, um, as many community members as possible. However, um, it seems most units are, um, are trying to make a larger impact with a few projects. So as far as reporting and compliance, um, it, it is a bit of a headache. Um, we're working through it and this, you know, this will help greatly if you do choose to approve tonight to appropriate this. Um, it will be an added control, just assurance that we are doing everything correctly, which will be a huge relief for me, honestly.
Yeah, I, I'm completely in favor of this and providing additional support for the reporting guidelines for these federal pass-through grants. And I just, I really appreciate too the feedback that is being shared tonight. Um, that's helpful for us to know. So thank you.
Yes, and, um, you know, if, if approved tonight again, um, I would like to have, uh, Baker Tilly come talk, talk with the council and commissioners. Um, just to kind of introduce themselves and just to kind of give you a rundown of the support they intend to provide.
Other comments or questions, Counsel Crossley?
I was just gonna say with this being said, um, I think this would be a good time for, um, if Baker Tilly, um, could come and speak with both county and county commissioners and council, this would be a really good time when we would have our joint county council commissioner session so that we can work through these projects that we are wanting to have all at the same time while having that conversation. So hopefully that could be on the radar soon.
Um, yes, I have a meeting scheduled Thursday, so I will bring that to their attention and hopefully they can make availability. Great.
Uh, yes, I'm really happy that you brought this forward because this put a lot more pressure on, uh, county staff than anybody had intended. Because to begin with, we had said we were going to do what the other county said. We were going to have major projects where it would have major differences. And instead we had all these little projects that just took up so much staff time. And, uh, it's just better to have the expert from Baker Tilly, they can say, yes, that's appropriate. No, that's not what you're allowed to do with this. They have studied this. Uh, our staff has to do a whole lot more, you know, like do their jobs, their other jobs, uh, that without them, this county could not run. So I'm glad that we're moving forward with this. And I, I really think that hopefully we'll find a major project that we'll use some of this remaining money for instead of a little bit here and a little bit there. And I know thousands of dollars is not a little bit. But we had intended to be at the beginning to do something really major, changing, altering for county government, county, the people in this county. And, uh, I don't see that happening. Not that it's not good things.
Yeah.
Lots of good things.
Thank you, Marty. And I, I do know that, um, I mean, that even these little projects are definitely making an impact on the community. Um, however, in the grand scheme of things, it's, there's a lot of money to spend.
Yeah. We have many problems at our feet and we're trying to figure it out, right? Um, I, I just want to echo comments that I like this. And I'll say one other thing that I like, uh, I think we should be thinking about because county employees and, and, and folks get busy is when we look at things like other special spending such as bonding, for example, I think that program management around that to execute that to completion would not be the worst investment for this county. Um, so that, so that whatever tax, taxing unit, tax dollar, whatever, they are able to say, to, to see that get, to get to wherever it's going to go. I mean, that's, it's much like these grants, someone is issuing the grant with the goal that it's going to do this thing. And so helping the auditor's office with that, I think would be huge on this. I think we have to think about those things as we move forward. All right. Any, Counselor Munson?
So I wanted to comment to everybody that I recognize that there are a number of, uh, possible ARPA funded projects that have, uh, changed since we first discussed them. And I want to know, uh, when there might be, um, a discussion between the council and the commissioners. Is there one scheduled that I don't know about or?
Counselor Munson, I believe there's, um, I believe there's a discussion on the work session on the next.
On the next work session? Very good. Okay, that's, I'm looking forward to that. So, so that's a time we can provide updates and thank you.
All right. Any other further questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll invite the, the public, if they wish to make a comment on this, to please do so. Raise your hand on Zoom or come forward in the Nat U Hill. Seeing none, we will do a roll call vote.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Hawk.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Going to item number seventeen, and that is, uh, Ms. Turner King, but first we've got a motion from Counsel Iverson.
Counsel, I would like to open for discussion the job description for the election supervisor.
Need a second. And we've got a motion second. Ms. Turner King.
At the PAC meeting on June sixth, um, Chief Deputy Martin appeared with the clerk, from the clerk's office and was requesting some changes to the election supervisor job description. Um, during that meeting, we talked about how some of the duties listed in the job description were statutorily overlapping with the duties of the clerk. So PAC approved the changes to the election supervisor position going to WIS, but before it did so, Ms. Martin and I were going to sit down and talk through the job duties. The goal was to send this to WIS, um, the following Friday, which was June ninth. After the PAC meeting, I met with Ms. Martin in Election Central and, um, additional information was discovered. That being that the election supervisor position is going to become vacant again on June sixteenth. This will be the second vacancy in that position since February. So at that time, we discussed what option would best serve, um, the restructure of this position and how to encompass the changes that the clerk's office would like to see with this position. And what we thought might be the better option, instead of Ms. Martin and I going through and identifying the changes that need to be made, is requesting a desk audit from WIS, which is, would be an option when the position becomes vacant. So in order to push or in order to get this, get this task accomplished on the timeline that PAC had originally intended, I wanted to bring it to the whole council for discussion to ask if, um, we would consider approving a desk audit of the election supervisor position.
All right, let's have a discussion. Counselor Iverson.
Uh, yeah, so I just wanted to, uh, verify that PAC did discuss this. Um, uh, we were able to, uh, have a, a nice conversation about how, uh, our elections are important and how our elections are getting more complicated. And we need to have someone in this position, uh, that, uh, we can handle the complexity and the importance of elections here in Monroe County. Uh, PAC did, uh, ask that legal and the clerk's office have a conversation to find a way forward. And I'm pleased that, um, this is before us today, um, as that way forward. And, uh, given the circumstances in that department, uh, certainly with this position, um, I, I support the idea of moving forward with a desk audit.
Counselor Iverson, thank you. Other comments? I have a few thoughts myself. Elections are near and dear to me because I, I did that in different lifetime. But, um, what I will say is I, I think that the position does need, in my honest opinion, needs to be looked at. Um, because I think that the, the elections are getting more complicated and there's more tremendous responsibility. There also is more public interaction, both with candidates, candidate committees, fundraising, all that, compliance, you name it. I mean, you take a look at what the election board's been up to in the last few months and that will answer your question in this. And the election's kind of slow right now. Um, I don't think that's going to change. And so I think that could be looked at. Well, the other thing I would love to see, and of course, this would require the support of the clerk and the election board, but for this position to be integral to the county, looking at the, the vote center method. Now, often when vote centers are brought up, it's discussed as something that will save counties money. I don't believe that's going to be the case. Uh, because I think that to have accessible voting, you have to have just about as many poll sites. We have a lot of reduced ones. Now, you have to have about just as many as you can, but the, the point being someone that gets off work on the IU campus before they drive to Steinsville to be done for the day could vote in a location nearer to where they're working. Um, so being more accessible. And we're hearing a lot from the public on that. That said, I don't think anyone should make a decision because Trent Eckert's up here just talking about it. I think a professional election supervisor assisting the clerk and the election board in that duty should look at that fairly so that they figure that best out. And if the desk audit helps accomplish that, I'd be all for it. Other comments or thoughts from council?
Awesome.
Yeah. Uh, I will go ahead and, uh, make a motion, uh, that, uh, we, uh, work with the, uh, the clerk's office to work with WIS to conduct a desk audit of the election supervisor.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for desk audit of the, to work with, toward, work with the clerk, the election board towards a desk audit. Discussion on the motion. See, not much discussion. So we'll see if the public has any comments on this. Seeing none. Can do it. Let's do voice, vote, voice vote. All those in favor, favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Carries. All right. No one, I don't think so. You got one. All right, that then takes us off that. Is it, are we good, Ms. Turner King? Awesome.
Good.
Let's move on to item number eighteen. This is approval of some minutes we've got.
Counsel. Counsel, I move to approve the summary minutes of May eighth, twenty twenty three, the joint executive session of May ninth, twenty twenty three, the rego session, May twenty third, twenty twenty three, the executive session and May twenty third, May twenty third, twenty twenty three, the work session as presented.
Second.
Got a motion, a second on these minutes. Thanks to those who take care of these minutes. We really appreciate it. That's public record a hundred years from now. That'll tell you what we did. Any comments or questions? Seeing none. Does the public have any comments or questions on or comments on these minutes? Seeing no public comment. We're gonna do a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same side. All right, carry. We now move to council comments.
Before we do that, can I take a point of personal privilege?
Well, you sure can.
Well, thank you, uh, Mr. Deckard. Uh, there is a monumental birthday happening on Monday. And we are just so excited that our staff is finally reaching the age of maturity. It's just so exciting. So what I'd like to propose is that uh Ms. Kim Shell's birthday is Monday. And I would ask my council colleagues to join me in singing happy birthday to Michelle.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to Kim. Happy birthday to you.
Cards can be sent to the council office. Flowers can be sent to the council office. Oh, my gosh, I tried to keep simple with greeting cards. Our, this has gotten off the rails, Mr. President. I return it back to you.
If if you like our singing, you'll love the work she does with her budget. So just keep, stay tuned, folks. That's coming up later this year. Um, so with that, we do, we jumped into council comments for a little singing there, but I'll open it up for other council comments. Counsel Cross.
Um, just a couple of things. Um, the, in in speaking of all the celebration on Monday, Monday also um is a holiday. Monday is Juneteenth. Um, and so there is, and it's finally getting recognized as a national holiday. Um, it's a day on, not a day off. So I would, if you don't know about Juneteenth, I would highly recommend Googling and doing some research, but it's a great time for folks to really understand that is actually when the last bit of slaves um in Galveston, Texas were actually free. Um, I know sometimes people think otherwise, but that's actual the time there. And the city of Bloomington also is doing a celebration this upcoming Saturday from two to seven at Switchyard Park.
Which is great.
Um, and so I've gone um in previous years and I would highly recommend other people to do that um as well. And so lastly, um, I know it's been, it was mentioned earlier in public comment, but we, I do want to highlight and recognize um the passing of the great giant Viola Talia Farrow. When you hear the name Talia Farrow, you obviously think of of Mr. Talia Farrow. Um, and I know of him uh being from Gary, being from the same high school. Um, we all knew that, but when you always talk about him, I don't think that she really got her flowers and the credit where there's due because it was often put on that, oh, that's the wife of so and so. Um, and both were giants in their own right, but I would say that, you know, she was a trailblazer because she trailblazed lots of paths for women and county government. Um, but in particular, women who look like me. And so I am to hear the news of her passing yesterday, um, it was really sad and it just reminds us that we also need to make sure that we pay homage and um credit when credit is due and to give flowers to those while they can still smell them. Um, so I definitely am thinking of her and her family. Um, she also was a sorority sister of mine. And she definitely will be missed and there will be another it won't be another like um Judge Talia Farrow. So just wanted to say that.
Thank you very much, Counsel Crossley. Counsel Munson.
I'd like to tag on what, to what uh Counsel Crossley said and say this would be Judge Talia Farrow's passing is a time for you all to learn more about their contributions to our community. And you can do this at the Monroe County History Center where there is a very nice uh exhibit. And that exhibit was uh made possible and parked by the uh donations and loans of the Talia Farrow family. So thanks to them for sharing their family with our community.
Thank you, Counsel Munson. Counsel Iverson.
Thank you, uh, President Deckard. Uh, and I just wanted to uh celebrate Pride Month uh this evening. Uh, it is a time of celebration and uh recognition that we have come very far. And um, I wanted to point out that as you pass the courthouse, uh, we are flying a pride flag and I just want to make sure that everyone sees that. I wanted to also point out that based on a Trevor Project uh survey, forty-five percent of LGBTQ youth in Indiana seriously considered suicide in the past year, including fifty-four percent of transgender and non-binary youth. The research is very clear. If there is health, there's access to health, that the rates of suicide ideation goes down, the rates of suicide goes down. Our state is going the wrong direction on this. We need to be doing better to provide health for people. And and at the risk of sounding uh performative, uh, there is a fantastic event uh coming up this Saturday at Cafe Petichu up in Indianapolis at five o'clock P M. Um, and I encourage folks to go up to Indianapolis. I also encourage you uh to put Pride Fest, Bloomington Pride Fest on your calendar. That will be August twenty sixth of this year. It's always a big event. Make sure it's on your calendar and happy pride, everybody.
Thank you very much, Counsel Iverson. Let me offer just a final comment here that kind of incorporates some of what you're saying. I I think about Judge Talia Farrow, I I went back to look at something I wrote a long time ago. And it reminded me something that kind of ties in all these comments. Um, I did get to observe her when I was working on my bachelor's degree in criminal justice and I knew very little and still probably do, but watching her in court was magnificent, but I also watched her conduct uh a same-sex adoption. As an observer, I got to watch that, and this was twenty plus years ago, a time when there were no judges doing that in the state of Indiana. And when I got to watch it, I, for the first time in my life, got to see that and one of the most loving family experiences I have been able to observe. And it was a, it was an eye-opening, uh breathtaking sort of thing. Not only that, but uh just the wisdom that she dispensed interpersonally to people on a day-to-day basis. I was in a career rut um at one point, and she stopped me in a grocery store. And she single-handedly, within a minute, gave me career advice, school advice, and personal advice on my love life. And she said, I'll never forget the quote Judge Talia Farrow said. She was talking to me about love. And she could tell I didn't know much about anything going on. And she said, when it's love, it'll hit you like a rock from the stars. And I, for all my life, very happy in my wonderful marriage, have thought about how right she was. That kind of wisdom did that for me in that store, but did that with families on that bench over and over. I'm not sure people always saw the rope, but they saw the compassion. Our community was so fortunate to have her as we celebrate her life, her memory and of course of George uh in his loss. It it is just incredible. And with that, any other further comments from the good of the order, for the good?
Happy Father's Day, too, for the dads.
Oh, Father's Day is coming on, yeah. Hope they remember it at home. On that note, we are adjourned. Thank you.